I'm Charlie, been led by the PAC 30394 and our pledge of allegiance. If you would please, stay and join me for a motion of silence. Those who have served in the armed forces, have served, who have committed the ultimate sacrifice, come on with silence please.
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and with all liberty and justice for all.
Thank you ladies. Good morning, welcome to your 2018 town meeting. Before I officially open the meeting, there's a few boring things that I have to go through. This meeting will be run under robbers' rules of order. An article must be moved and seconded prior to discussion. After it's moved and seconded before discussion, before taking a vote, I'll restate the article. Articles may only have one amendment, that amendment may only have one amendment, we must address them in that order, starting at the reverse amendment. After you have spoken on a particular article, you will not be recognized again until everyone else within the body has enough to speak. A division of the house or paper ballot, when we're voting for something that, if we do something from the floor, and it seems like it's close or whatever else, then if I need one person to raise their hand and six other people join him or her, then we will automatically go through a paper ballot vote versus from the floor.
Bob, can't hear you.
Can you move closer please? I don't know what to tell you, speaking into my microphone. Chris, can anybody else hear me? I'll try to do better. A debate may be cut off by simply moving the question. I ask that all remarks be addressed to me, not the boards, not the school boards, not individuals from the floor. Address your questions to me. Remember, we all came in here as neighbors, and we're going home as neighbors, so let's keep this simple. So having said that, also as far as nominations for offices, we only need a nomination, we do not need a second. Every now and then someone's gonna jump up a second anyways, we'll just go with the flow on that, but all we need is a nomination and not a second. All contested races will be done by grain ballot. As you can see, we have two ballots that are being voted on. Back of the room, one's the school budget, and one is the fire truck or fire apparatus by Australian ballot, those who can cast at any point in time between now and seven o'clock I guess this evening. So, without further ado... You gotta bear with me, we do this once a year, you already got a count of pressure. At some point in time, I will have our two representatives, Representative Brian Savage and Representative Veriana Kamash, give us a quick update as to what's not happening in our field here, depending on how you want to look at it. So having said that, I will now officially open your 2018 Sheldon Town Meeting. Illegal voters of the town of Sheldon and Sheldon County School District hereby warned and notified Demetri Sheldon Elementary School, all indicted and placed, on the 6th of March at 10:00 AM, Sheldon School. Please note, Article 9, a school district article required to be voted on by Australian ballot. The polls open at 7:00 and close at 7:00 PM. Illegal voters of the town of Sheldon and the Sheldon School District are further notified that an informational meeting will be held on March 5th, and has gone vice versa. Business at hand. One, to elect the following town officers as required by law. A, moderator for a term of one year. B, a select board member for a term of three years. C, auditor for the term of three years. D, elister for three years. E, a tax collector for one year. F, a town agent for one year. G, grand juror for one year. Article 2, act upon reports of the town officers. Article 3, to see what amount the town will vote to defray its expenses for 2018. The amount of $972,046 with the voted articles has been budgeted by the select board. Article 4, to act upon the compensation of elected town officers other than full-time help at the rate of $15 per hour. Article 5, to authorize the select board to borrow such money as necessary in anticipation of taxes to meet current expenses. Article 6, to see if the voters will vote to accept the provision of the Vermont statute relative to the payment of its current taxes to the town treasurer. Article 7, to see if the voters will vote $2,355 for the Northwest Regional Planning. Article 8, will the voters of the town of Sheldon authorize the payment not to exceed $20,000 as a stipend for the town fire and rescue personnel. Article 9 is by Australian ballot, which is a town apparatus, town fire truck apparatus. And then we will recess the town meeting and enter into the school meeting. And under that, we'll have Article 1, to elect a moderator. 2, to elect a school director to complete a two-year term of a three-year term by ballot. Article 3, to elect a school director to a term of three years by ballot. Article 4, to act upon the reports of the school directors and treasurers. Article 5, Australian ballot. Sheldon voters, Sheldon School District approve the school board to expend $5,752,513, which is the amount the school board has determined to be necessary for the ensuing fiscal year. It is estimated that this proposed budget, if approved, will result in education spending of $13,702 per equalized pupil. The projected spending is 4.3% higher than the spending from the current year. Article 6, will the voters of the Sheldon School District authorize the school district, the school directors to borrow such money as may be necessary in anticipation of taxes to meet the current expenses. And Article 7 is to transact any other business thought proper when met. We recess back from the school meeting into the town meeting and address number 10, which is to transact any other business thought proper when met. And again, you can see our nonprofit donations, the select board has determined not to exceed $10,500, and they're all listed below this. So jumping back to 1A. Elect a moderator for a term of one year. Nominations from the floor. Somebody's gonna nominate somebody. Bob Norris has been nominated. Any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, the nominations are closed. All in favor is signified by saying yea.
Yea.
Opposed, nay. I will ask the clerk to cast one vote for Bob Norris. Thank you. 1B, a select board for a three-year term. Nominations from the floor, please. Kelly?
Nominate Mr. Greg Stevens to succeed himself.
Greg Stevens has been nominated. Any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Having seen none, the nominations are closed. All in favor of Greg Stevens, signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Opposed, nay. I will ask the clerk to cast one ballot for Gregory Stevens. 1C, an auditor for three years. But I have a nomination from the floor, please. Brian Derry has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, nominations are closed. All in favor of Brian Derry, signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Opposed, nay. I believe the yays have it. I'll ask the clerk to cast one ballot for Brian Derry. We're moving kind of fast, I may have to slow this down to hit 12 o'clock here for lunch here, so... Somebody got a good joke out there? Never mind. 1D, a lister for three years. Nominations from the floor, please.
Nominate Diane Crane.
Diane Crane has been nominated for a lister. Any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, the nominations will close. All in favor of Diane Crane for three-year lister, signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Opposed, nay. I'll ask the clerk to cast a ballot for Diane Crane. 1E, a tax collector for one year. Nominations from the floor, please.
Cynthia Churchill.
We have Cynthia Churchill nominated for one year. Any other nominations? Are there any other... I'm sorry. Christina Churchill, what did I say?
Cynthia.
Did you say Cynthia?
Christina.
I know she don't have a twin sister. Christina Churchill, I'm sorry. Are there any other nominations besides Christina? Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, all in favor of Christina Churchill, signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Opposed, nay. I will ask the clerk to cast a ballot for Christina Churchill. 1F, a town agent for one-year term. Nominations from the floor.
Robert Norris.
Robert Norris has been nominated. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Seeing none, I'll close the nominations. All in favor of Robert Norris for town agent for one year, signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Opposed, nay. I will ask the clerk to cast one ballot for Robert Norris. 1G, a grand juror for a one-year term. Nominations from the floor. Robert Norris has been nominated for grand jury. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Seeing none, we'll close the nominations. All in favor of Robert Norris for grand juror, signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Opposed, nay. Thank you, I'll ask the clerk to cast one ballot. Article 2, to act upon the reports of the town officers. Any questions on Article 2? Greg, any guys, anything you want to add to it or say to the bell?
Well, if I can think of a straight one, I... It's obviously, the book has a little different look to it this year, in that the clerks using the nemwriting system. It printed in a lot of the format, and the book has changed here for what?
Yeah, there you do.
The book, the book has changed, you know, in its, in its, sorry. The book has changed in its format, or its presentation here slightly, so it's got a little bit different look to it. I mean, I don't know if I can speak to the numbers all that. I mean, the budget's down this year. Budget's gone really down. We omitted, in the last year, we didn't take a credit last year, that we're putting back in this year, and then recognizing the credit for this year, and that's why our budget is, to be raised by taxes, is different this year. It's down. And also, we're not fixing the fence that surrounded the property here, so that was another $25,000 that was in the budget last year. Other than that, there's some increases and decreases. There's a little, we adjusted the insurance, we got into different insurance this year, and we lowered the, lowered the, we went to a different color, if you will, from a gold to a brown, I can't remember. Platinum to a gold, if you will, and changed the carrier, so we saved some money there to try to stay in budget. Other than that, you know... I'll speak to any questions you have, if I can.
Are there any questions from the floor? Yes, please.
Send motion to save the reports of the town officers as printed.
Send a motion to approve Article 2, act upon reports of the town officers, I have a second.
Second.
I have a second. Any further discussion on Article 2, act upon reports of the town officers? Having none, all in favor of Article 2, signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Opposed, nay. It appears the nays have it, Article 2 is passed. Article 3, to see what amount the town will vote to defray its expenses for 2018. The amount of $972,046 with the voted articles has been budgeted by the select board. What's your pleasure? Brian?
I'll move it second.
It's been moved and seconded, Article 3. Any discussion?
It says with voted articles, does that include the fire truck, or that don't include the fire truck?
I don't believe that includes the fire truck, that's a separate issue of the school board, the school budget and the...
That would be an addition, if the fire truck, the issue, if the fire truck were to be passed on the ballot today, then that would be an additional voted article. That's not included in this number, no.
Any further question? Any further discussion on Article 3? Brian?
The last thing to work on Woods Hill Road and Mason Road intersection, to get that fixed? Or is that a state property, or is that a town property?
You talking about Roy's Corner?
Yes.
No, there's no, I'm not aware of any project going on down there, although I had it on my mind, there's some safety factors here, we added some stop signs down there, but I don't know of any, I don't, I'm not aware of anything going on down there right now.
Can we get that, we made... To take out some of the roughness?
Of the intersection?
Yes.
That could be on you again, yeah. Every spring, we, every spring, road crew and selectmen convene there, and after the frost is gone, and the dust has settled there, we go out and look at the, the roads in the most heat. We have a pretty good idea, but we always be stressed there after the frost goes out, and spring begins, and we'll take a look at that. I would like to see something, I'd actually like to see the state do something with that whole intersection there. Sometimes it gets kind of wild there, especially for outer counters, people that are not aware of, they come up Woods Hill Road, and they're just oblivious that there's a, there's this offset intersection there that, you know, can cause havoc. But, we'll see about paving that, the research and that.
No, just for clarification purposes, we're talking about Woods Hill and Mason Road, the whole intersection?
I would say...
The whole intersection, including Route 105, which is a state highway?
Well, what the town would be paving, or those approaches there, within the towns right away, obviously, not interfere, we can't be interfering with the states right away. But, I think what they're referring to is that the roughness of the road as you approach the intersection, or at the intersection itself. Is that what we're talking to?
Correct. The Wood Hill Road, that's rough. When you're sitting on the other side, watching the cars come at you, it gets exciting.
Any further discussion on Article 3? No further conversation, discussion on Article 3? It's been moved and seconded, discussion. All those in favor of Article 3, to see what amount the town will vote to defray its expenses for 2018, the amount of $972,046 with the voted articles, has been budgeted by the select board. All in favor, signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Opposed, nay. It appears the yays have it, so move. Article 4, to act upon the compensation of elected town officers other than full-time help at the rate of $15 per hour. Your thoughts?
So move.
It's been moved, we have a second. Second by Brian Derry. Any discussion?
Who is classified as full-time help?
Who is classified as full-time help?
Right.
Town clerk? The assistants? While this article, oh, okay, answer your question. The, the road, the town's road and sewer personnel. Town clerk? The assistants? And that would be that? All, everyone else that is either elected or appointed, or under that? This refers to the elected and the appointed people that participate in the town government.
And now the court has to do this, the whole thing? Are they full-time, or they're part of?
They're part of. That's, that's how it's always been handled. The clerk hires her assistants.
But that's all the $15?
No, no. That's negotiated between the clerk and her assistants. And usually, there's a discussion with the board in, with that.
Any further discussion on Article 4?
Why are we having so much full-time help? I had three in one year.
They decided they didn't like the position.
We can't hear that.
I have not had any problems with my assistants. Tina got done, she adopted her grandchildren, and she didn't feel she had time for it, and Lucy felt she just didn't like the job, so she needed a different position. There really has not been no problems with the part-time half in the office. Tina moved on because she adopted her grandchildren, she felt she didn't have time to give to the town, and Lucy was there for six months, and she decided it wasn't for her, so she got done. But there really has been no problem in the office.
Thank you.
So who are your two assistants now?
I now have Depp is out, and Demetrius holding.
And what are your roles?
Depp.
How do they assist you?
Depp is in the office now. She is doing a lot for me, she does my accounts payable, so we have two eyes on that now. And Demetrius comes in, and he is doing my land records, which we are digitized now, so we have a whole new program, and he is going back into the records to get everything in, so that we'll have at least a 40-year look-up, if not more.
So his role is not a permanent one, or is it...
He works, he works Thursday and Fridays for me, he comes in four hours a day, he works eight hours a week, just to help out in the office and getting my records up to date.
So you consider this eight hours a week as a permanent role, or is it just that you're completely digitized?
I'm thinking it would be a permanent role, but, I mean, it all depends on what we have going on in the office, what's going on.
Fair enough, thank you.
Michelle?
Because how much is already being spent now at $12 an hour? And after calculating how much it will cost us extra to pay people $15 an hour?
Can I speak to that?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Diane.
The lister's office has a budget, and I don't, I didn't feel like to have to speak on it, so I didn't bring that with me to show you the breakdown. The budget is in your book, and will probably be voted on today, and in that budget, we have asked for $15 an hour. It, last year, just... Last year, we didn't use our budget. We have two active listers in the office, three active listers in the office, and we have different hours depending on what's going on. So those, at the end of the year, everybody gets paid a different amount because of the hours. They have scheduled in our budget, $15 an hour, for... Tenaya, over.
That doesn't answer that question.
Okay, let's look at...
So I believe your question, Michelle, is we spent $100,000 last year, $12 an hour, and we're moving it to go to $15 per hour, what does that look like versus the $100,000? Just as an example, that we spent. No, no, it's just an example. But that's the answer you're looking for. The difference, right?
You asking us to vote on something that we don't really know how much we're gonna be spending.
For the lister's office, last year, I believe we had 400 and some, maybe 450 hours. So you multiply that out, it's not $2,000.
Three times, four...
So what makes a difference? About $12, $100 to the lister's office? And then other people that are getting paid $12 an hour sit on boards, and some of those people get paid for maybe four hours a year, 10 hours a year, it's really hard to tell how many people those boards are called into the PRB and the planning commission. There's a little flurry in the spring with new bills and subdivisions and stuff, but it doesn't really add up to but a few hundred dollars total, with the $3 rates. Thank you.
Thank you, yes.
If you have a couple of listers, it's listed as three, but then you go to the salary page, and there's only two that are paid. So how many listers do we really have, and why are only two out of the three being paid?
Well, I believe we do have three listers, as to why we want them to not be in county state. Well, I believe we do have three listers as to why we want them to not be in county state, I have no idea.
Well, I can obviously add that I'm a lister.
Sure.
Also, I'm the zoning administrator and at certain times of the year, um, when it's busy, usually on Wednesday nights, if zoning is slow, I'll typically do sketching or Mary and Diane, because they're in the office, that, those evenings on Wednesdays doing listing. I'll contribute at that time on Wednesday evening. So you typically won't see my salary because I don't differentiate. I'll just charge it to, um, zoning hours because I'm there for two hours on Wednesday evening. So I incorporate zoning and listing and at the same time.
Thank you. Can I answer your question? Any further discussion on Article Four? Correct, what? Any further discussion on Article Four? Having, uh, Article Four, act upon the compensation of elected town officers other than the full-time help at a rate of fifteen dollars per hour. All in favor signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Opposed, nay? So move. I, I believe what we voted on was raising the paper twelve to fifteen there? I heard, I heard somebody. Article Five. To authorize the select board to borrow such money as necessary in anticipation of taxes to meet the current expenses. Do we have a motion? Andy, second? Second by Mike. We have a first and a second, any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, Article Five, to authorize the select board to borrow such money in anticipation of taxes to meet the current expenses. All in favor signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Opposed, nay? It appears the ayes have it, so move. Article Six. To see if the voters will vote to accept Everybody good? Everybody alright? Article Six, let's try that again. To see if the voter will vote to accept the provision of the Mount statutes relative to the theme of his current taxes to the town treasurer. Do I have a motion on Article Six? Brian, a second? We have a first and a second, any discussion on Article Six? Having none, all in favor of Article Six, signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Opposed, nay? So move, the ayes have it. Article Seven. To see if the voters will vote two thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars for the Northwest Regional Planning. Do we have a motion on the floor?
Everyone have a motion on page eight for the rest of the
Just give me my motion and second, we can have a discussion on that. Brian? Do I have a second? We have a second. We have a first and a second. Mr. Fern, you have a question?
Uh, how come that's not on with the others on page eight? That's, that's not an honor, Rock. That's not, the, uh, that is a, that's a municipal, uh, I think, well, it's a municipal, uh, entity actually. So it's, uh, government, government at work in, frankly, in Northwestern Vermont. We, we participate in that, in that regional planning. And that's our, that's assessed fee based on our, on our, uh, population, if you will.
Pat?
Would you like to point out that the town shows is very well served by the Northwestern Board and they keep the town straight.
I would, I would agree with you, Pat. You know, if we need some problems, you know, they, they assisted us this year, uh, in three or four matters. One of them being the, the speed ordinance that we cleaned up, the speed ordinance all throughout town. Uh, and, uh, that was a big help, you know? To go out and do all that, uh, surveys and get all of the keys, keys and ice or, you know, get everything done and presented to the that might smooth this could be, so. And then they also helped with the zoning and the, uh, planning commission. Various things, various things.
Any further discussion on Article Seven? Any further discussion? Seeing none, Article Seven, to see if the voters will vote two thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars for the Northwest Regional Planning. All in favor signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Opposed, nay? It appears the ayes have it. So move. Article Eight. Will the voters of the town of Sheldon authorize the payment not to exceed twenty thousand dollars as a stipend for the town fire and rescue personnel? We have a first and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? It's not time to eat yet. Having no discussion, Article Eight, will the voters of the town of Sheldon authorize the payment not to exceed twenty thousand dollars as a stipend to the town fire personnel? Rescue personnel? All in favor signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Opposed, nay? So move, it appears the ayes have it. And Article Nine is by Australian ballot. Everyone's fully aware that we vote in the back of the room, you have the seventh camp this evening, please vote. Just wanted to check to see what time they're serving lunch here. I know a lady who went into the school portion of this, I, I know this.
Hey, Bob?
Yes? Hey, do it every honest, you're meeting folks. I'm just facilitating.
Yeah, let's do it.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay, at this point in time, we'll reset the town meeting and enter into the school meeting, at your request. The school's business for 2018 is one, to elect a moderator. Two, to elect a school director to complete the two-year term of a three-year term by ballot. Three, to elect a school director to a term of three years by ballot. Four, to act upon the recourse of the school directors and treasurers. Number five is by Australian ballot. Sheldon voters, Sheldon School District approve the school board spending of five million, seven hundred and fifty-two thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars, which is the amount the school board has determined to be necessary for the ensuing fiscal year. It is estimated that this proposed budget approved will result in education spending of thirteen thousand, seven hundred and two per equalized pupil. Projected spending is four point three percent higher than the spending for the current year. Article Six, will the voters of Sheldon School District authorize the school director to borrow such money as may be necessary in anticipation of taxes to meet the current expenses? Article Seven, to transact any other business thought proper when met. Backing up to Article One. To elect a moderator. Nominations from the floor.
Nominate Bob Norris.
Bob Norris has been nominated. Any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Having said, having seen no more nominations, Bob Norris for moderator for one year. All in favor signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Opposed, nay? Thank you, the ayes have it. The last, the clerk passed one ballot. Article Two, which will be done by ballot. To elect a school director to complete two years of a term of three years by ballot. Nominations from the floor. Jason?
Nominate Sean Stevens.
Sean Stevens. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Having, go further nominations, Sean Stevens. Unopposed, all in favor signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Opposed, nay? Congratulations. Would you like to get up and say a few words?
Okay.
Now, had you, had competition, you'd want to give us?
It's an honor to serve this community.
Well said.
Alright, congratulations, Sean. Article Three. To elect a school director for a term of three years by ballot. Nominations from the floor.
Nominate Jason McConnell.
I'm going to decline that. Like to nominate Jason McConnell?
Mr. Bordeaux has nominated Jason McConnell with officially declining the nomination. Having said that, Mr. Bordeaux, you interested in it?
He took a bite out there, so.
Okay, so I thought. Any nominations on the floor, please?
Nominate Emily Norris.
Emily Norris.
I'd like to nominate Jamie Carter.
Jamie Carter. Any other nominations? Emily Norris and Jamie Carter have been nominated. We will. I got whipped up here. Yeah, we're going to get right to that. Marie just pulled me, ordered me for that. Hey, having no further nominations, we're going to close the nominations. This will be done by ballot, but at this point in time, Emily was nominated first. If you want to get up and speak, Emily?
Hi, I'm Emily Norris. I live in Sheldon. Any, any? Hi, my name is Emily Norris. I've lived in Sheldon for a little over five years with my husband. I have two children. My daughter Hallie is in the fourth grade here. And I have a son Brady who will be entering the school within a few years. Watch out, Sheldon School, but he's on his way. Um, I work at Northwestern Counseling and Support Services. I've been there a little over ten years. Um, I am an assistant director in the Developmental Services Division and I specialize in managing large budgets and navigating systems and resources for those in our community who need it most. Um, I'm really excited about the opportunity to give back to my community and improve this goal. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Jamie?
Uh, my name's Jamie Carter. Uh, I live in Sheldon and I have for roughly the past five years. My name may be unfamiliar to some of you. I ran for state representative a few years back. Just trying to, you know, do what I can for our community. I have a son in the first grade here at Sheldon Elementary School. Um, I currently work at the University of Vermont where I teach chemistry labs. Want to try to do my part. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. We will now vote by paper ballot. A through K will vote to my left. L through Z will vote to my right.
Next good thing. So the pile is spelt like a thosser. I was tapping, at the end of the line, I jumped over, I had to fight the belt. So I was tapping three, I was tapping the fourth one. You can see it, it's gushing.
Can we have our seats, please? At this time, could I have the school board come up and join me? Okay, the results for the school director for the three-year term are in. There was a total of eighty-two votes cast. Of which Emily Norris received sixty-five and Jamie Carter received seventeen. I want to thank everyone for running for office. After doing it a few years myself, it's always a challenge. At this point in time, they're not going to be discussing town business, but we have our representative, Ryan Savage, and Mariana Gomax. Did that come up with a brief summary as to what's going on in Mount Gooder? Not talking town business. Would anyone care to move for a suspension of the rules? They can talk, or? Okay. Please come up.
Excuse me. Uh, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you and good morning. It's always a pleasure to come to Town Meeting. And, you know, I'm the moderator of the Town of Swanton. But I don't do anything because we do all-day Australian ballot. There's just an informational meeting that unfortunately I missed this year due to my schedule in Montpelier. So it's good to see a town moderator actually have to work. And Mariana said that I would go first because I'm the senior person. Well, what's been going on in Montpelier? It's been an interesting year, as they always are. We started when we got there in January, as you probably all recall, the first couple of days of business. It's the marijuana issue that there was quite, in my own opinion, a lot more pressing state business at hand than spending two days on marijuana issue that could have been dealt with at another time. But nonetheless, it passed and here we are. The important issues, again, we're working when we elect for Town Meeting, Bray, is the fiscal year 2019 budget. And for the second year in a row, the administration has proposed a budget that will not increase taxes or fees while at the same time serving the needs of the voters. This is still in the Appropriations Committee, even though last Friday was crossover. But the money committees, which is the House Appropriation Committee and the House Ways and Means, get an additional one week to keep that bill in their committee before having to vote it out. So we'll see what happens when we get back next Tuesday, week from today. In education financing or education funding, there's been a proposal to reduce the statewide residential property tax significantly in place of share of the education funding on the state income tax. This is being debated, or has been debated, in the House Ways and Means Committee, but there's been so many changes, it appears not to have a resolution. Well, there was one that was voted out last Friday. And I will quote from a member of our caucus who understands it better than the rest of us, stating that he will likely not share it with his legislative district unless pressed to do so because it's so far from becoming law. He didn't want to needlessly confuse voters. And that's how confusing it is. But anyways, bottom line on this, and I certainly don't intend to confuse anyone, they would lower the homestead property tax an average of only fifteen cents, the tax rate. And an income tax average of ten percent rate increase in Alderman towns. District savings vary based on the level of people spending. All the voters will pay a school income tax surcharge that collectively in the state will be an additional fifty-nine point one million dollars. Beginning in fiscal year nineteen, homestead district property tax rates will be calculated using the district spending in assessing the base amount. using the district spending in assessing the base amount, which was eleven thousand nine hundred sixteen in fiscal year nineteen, dividing it by the yield, eighty-five hundred in fiscal year nineteen, and adding this amount to one dollar. The income tax rate for those receiving income sensitivity will be determined similarly. So that's, I'm sorry to say, I don't understand that and how it would work. And, but I do understand fifty-nine point one million dollar increase. And plus, there'll be some other funds coming in from other areas, so that you're probably looking at close to ninety million dollars. I do not see that passing as is, I hope not. And if it does, I have not spoken to the administration, but I wouldn't be surprised if there would be a veto on that dollar. So that's that for education. Certainly didn't mean to confuse everybody. And then my committee of health transportation, we've been working on saliva roadside testing. Bill did pass out the transportation committee, went into judiciary committee, and we did vote and pass the house last week. And that is a test that will not only test for marijuana in somebody's system, but it is also about six or seven other drug categories. And this is just a roadside test, it's not as visible as evidence, just like a breathalyzer is not. However, if there's a presence there detected, this problem will cause due further tests. This is an effort that is another tool, toolbox of law enforcement to make error, anyway you say. And that's pretty much it. I mean, there's been a lot of other stuff going on. And we'll certainly invite everybody to stay tuned. We're going to be around a little bit and hopefully get lunch before we head back to our own town meeting. And certainly feel free to come and ask us any questions on any subjects. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Hello, and thank you all for coming. This is one of the rare opportunities that we get to really mix and mingle with you folks. So Brian was quite correct, I had the option of addressing you first, or he did. And I chose to ask him to come first at a deference. He is the senior, he's the senior representative for the district, so I think he should have a place of honor. Brian mentioned many of the things that are, have been going on during the session, so I will try not to repeat anything. But I do have some remarks to make and to bring you up to give you an insight in terms of in the Human Services Committee, the different issues we've been dealing with and the different laws that have been passed. So I will start off by saying that this has been a very busy legislative session, which promises to continue when we return to the State House next week. Shortly after the session, shortly after the start of the session in January, Governor Scott revealed his budget, which promised no new taxes or fees, and so far, that has held the line. He made it very, very clear to all of the committees and the chairs of committees that he would not sign on to any bill that raised taxes or fees. So as Brian said, everything is in appropriations right now, so we'll have to see how that all comes out. But I have to say that I was surprised, even in my committee of human services, which has one of the biggest budgets, if not the biggest budget in the state, we held the line. And there were no bills put forth. If appropriations had to be involved in any way, if there was any kind of money, it was not going to happen. So I am really happy about that. And what basically we've been instructed to do is to, we had to all do a deep dive into our committee budgets to see where money was being spent, on what it was being spent, the different programs, whether or not these programs were effective, and what we might be able to consolidate or do away with. So in that respect, it would be, one would think it would be saving money, but it doesn't quite work that way. You can defund a particular program that's not in effect, but that money, it goes to, it goes to other items. We have, even though there is no, there are no new taxes or fees, there are increases in the budget because of mandated statutory requirements. So most of the budget is still being level funded, but there are going to be those natural increases which are, they come from the federal government, they come from contracts, they come from a lot of different areas, and they have to be dealt with in honor. So, but I would like to address just a smidgen on the education issue. Not education itself, but the cost. As you all remember, Governor Scott put forth a very workable and a very well thought-out and planned healthcare bill for the education community because of all of the contracts, all the healthcare contracts in the state of Vermont became null and void as of January one because of provision in Obamacare. So the governor and his administration came up with a plan. And this was in consultation with school board associations and also the supervisor union supervisors, the school board superintendent. It was a way of being able to have the state intervene in terms of negotiating when it came to the cost of healthcare premiums and that sort of thing. A very good case was made for it. The night that we took the vote, which was very late, it was about ten, ten-thirty at break, we had a number of people from the majority party and we had a number of independents, in fact, we all the independents, vote for this particular piece of legislation, which would have resulted in property owners saving annually, right out of the gate, twenty-six million dollars. That's not chump change. And because of the length of contracts, it would have multiplied through, over the years that each of those contracts were in place. However, that being said, we, when the vote was taken, we did, we won that by one vote. And then it became what I call the seedy side of politics. And the thing I hate about politics, because there was one more vote that could have been cast and was cast by the Speaker of the House, that's when it became political, because under the rules of the House, if you cast a vote, if that vote results in a tie, then the bill gets killed. And that's exactly what happened. And it was for no other reason than political. And I am still smarting over that because it's the people of the state of Vermont that really got hurt by this. And I know that there was a lot of things, a lot of misinformation, let me put it that way, that was given out to school personnel by the unions and lobbyists. And they were done a disservice. Everybody in the state was done a disservice. But we'll see, we have to work on this going forward. That is a big, big chunk of the school property taxes. And that's what we're trying to do, is to bring a relief to that. But the majority didn't see it that way. So I'm sorry if I get a little, I get a little upset over this because it was not, it was not fair. At any rate, let me go on and give you a little information as far as what has been happening. As part of the state budget, one of two items that the governor put into his budget proposed, and that was, one of it was the proposed phasing out of the state tax on social security and eliminating the tax on military pensions, which would help a very large population. It can't be done all in one fell swoop because of the reality of the economics, but certainly having it phased in is better than the way it is now. So we passed a number of bills in human services. The first was two seventy-one, which relates to the administering of the supplemental national assistance program known as SNAP. And it's a federally funded program, and what it does is it helps the state or brings the state in alignment with what the federal government, the edicts of the federal government and the administration of the program. So the next one was H six oh eight, which establishes a working group related to the Old Vermonters Act that would develop recommendations for, which would align our legislation to the federal, federal older Americans Act, Vermont Plan on Aging and Choices for Care Program for the state of Vermont. And right now, it's been referred to the Senate Committee on Health and Welfare. H five eighty-nine deals with foster care and foster parents and the child who, it concerns the reasonable and prudent standards, sensible parenting, parenting decisions that maintain the health, safety, and best interest of the foster child and youth while encouraging emotional and developmental, including decisions about extracurricular, cultural, and social activities. There are a lot of regulations regarding that, some of which don't really make any sense. So we kind of took the bull by the horns and got a lot of testimony and just looked at the whole issue in order that children who are placed in foster care, it's very traumatic for them, and to try to ensure that they have as normal, as normal a situation as they can under those conditions. And so there have been restrictions about foster parents having to sign notes and to allow the foster child to engage in extracurricular activities. And a lot of times, this involves a timeframe, which is totally not workable. So it's practical issues that we look at. We also passed a bill, H six eighty-six, which establishes a child fatality review team within the Department of Health. It will examine the unexpected and unexplained child deaths and make recommendations to prevent, hopefully prevent, future deaths. H six seventy-three amends the reach-up program, which allows some assets to not be counted any longer because otherwise it could result in a benefits loss. An example would be to allow and to not asset count a child's car, which may be needed, which is often needed for transportation to and from school or in a work situation, allowing that child. So we have disallowed that transportation need because otherwise if it was counted, a lot of people would get a benefit reduction. And that's not what we're trying to do. We're trying to be a helping hand to people who want to, don't, want to improve their situation. And so doing something like this makes a whole lot of sense, and we heard a lot of testimony regarding that. I will not go on and on, I promise. There's been a lot of concern about advanced directives, medical advanced directives, when it, especially when it concerns people who find themselves going into a nursing home. And so we have passed legislation which outlines the people that will be allowed to give information about advanced directives to new residents coming into a nursing home, only if they have, if they do not, when they enter the nursing home, have a medical directive. It affects those people. And one of the, there's a nursing home abootsman who would be involved in terms of overseeing a lot of this. And the one restriction is that anyone who is working for an employee of a nursing home will not be allowed to participate and be what they call an explainer of all of the different options, including DRE, which is Do Not Sessitate, DE, Do Not, DE, sorry. At any rate, so that is, that is, the only other one, what other issue? Involves what's called a certificate of need for nursing homes. That is, that is process that is currently handled by the Vermont Care Board. They, it is not really a good fit according to them and according to what we have discovered because the certificate of need was really designed for new businesses, new projects. And when you're talking about a new owner of an existing nursing home business, it's a different animal, sort of. And it's not really a good fit with them. So we have, we are working on legislation to change that so that it will no longer have to go through that process with the Vermont Care Board. But it will actually, a lot of it will be handled by Dale, and it will be a review of the criteria regarding to financial and ethical things, so that it will, it'll improve it. And the state or CMS will be able to get a red flag if something is not going well in terms of the finances of the nursing home, because that directly affects the quality of care. And so one of our concerns was if a nursing home management starts experiencing issues financially, it's going to impact on the residents, and they need to be protected. So we need to put into place a mechanism which will red flag when it looks like it could be a potential financial problem. So we're going to be taking that up when we go back next week and hopefully bring it to finality and then have it introduced on the floor. So that's it.
Thank you, Representative Gomash and Savage. Without further ado, I might also mention that they've been working very hard on the kitchen for lunch, because I want everyone to dessert them. Feel free to get some lunch, one has to eat, Kalen will come up and speak, or if it's in the school, issues.
Morning, everybody. So first and foremost, I just want to thank everybody for coming today and last night if you came to the budget presentation. And I also want to thank Jason McConnell. He has been on the board for six years and has decided to not run again, as we saw. But I want to thank him. He often volunteers for a lot of the extra stuff that goes along with the board. He was integral in the Act forty-six process for our school. So I just want to thank him for his work and his mentorship. I just had a couple highlights from our reading last night and our report in the town report. So first, Act forty-six, I just want to give an update about how we're proceeding with that. So our alternative governance structure, which we voted on, has been sent to the state. So now we're waiting on the Agency of Education to review that. Jason McDowning testimony, so we're sort of waiting in Lingle right now about what their decision will be. But that work has finished up at this point. The other piece I wanted to talk about was, as you'll notice- The other piece I wanted to talk about was, as you'll notice in our report, the infrastructure within the school is aging, and we had the Cilemies audit done a couple of years back that helped us identify priorities moving forward, in terms of what needs to be done. Some examples, the HVAC system, siding, the gym, sort of big projects that aren't going to work into our budget. And so, moving forward, over the next couple of years, we'll be thinking about Bonvo potentially. So, we'd invite everybody to come to our meetings, talk with your representatives, let us know what your priorities are. Though we're, we're very early in that process, but we really need community input into what we need to get done, what we want to get done, and what we, what our plans are going to be for the future for our school. So, please reach out if there are any questions at this point. We'd love to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Julia. Article four, to act upon reports of the school directors and treasurers. Yes, motion, and a second, and a second. Any discussion? Ryan.
Page 75. The revenue numbers are different. From the total receipts.
So, my understanding, and Heather, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I know you talked to Laura about this last night.
About expenditures, but you asked her about revenues.
Okay. I'm not exactly showing the revenue piece. I know expenditures, we talked with our business manager last night, and it sounds like it's different styles of accounting, and the way the bookkeeping is done at central office versus the way the orders flow to the town. But we can find out from our business office about revenues.
Well, I'm looking at it, just, just on the first one here for page eight.
So, they should equal themselves out.
Hi, the old firm. Honestly, I would expect that it's likely to be different, how many procedures within our central office and the town. It sounds like that's how the expenditures was.
On page 75, it says subtotals 2017 is like $5.8 million. Then down below it says total revenues of 6.5. Where does the other $1 million come into that equation with them numbers? I know there's a sub total, the votes are two numbers between, I don't think, how much like. I don't know. Those numbers correct?
I'm gonna, we're gonna have to talk to, we're gonna have to talk to our business manager, I think, back to you.
Is Ryan, like I talked about yesterday, he would like to provide a weekly audit, but audit is not done.
That it's not done, at this point?
This is a draft form, we now, we're gonna formulate it, extra weeks or...
So, you had a new audit firm come in for the supervisory union, because the old firm retired, and so, this, the new firm that's come in has sort of completely taken everything down, to really get a better, better idea about their practices and procedures at the supervisory union, so it has taken a little bit longer than it used to.
Does he have the number of your costs?
I don't have the number here. I can get it for you.
Any further discussion? Having none. Article four, to act upon reports of the school directors and treasurers. All in favor signify by saying yea. Pov nay. It appears the yeas have. Article five, clearly the school district budget, last standing ballot in the back of the room. Article six, will the voters in the Sheldon School District authorize the school director to borrow such money as may be necessary in anticipation of taxes to meet current expenses? We have a first and a second. Any discussion? Having no discussion, all in favor signify by saying yea. Pov nay. Yeas have. Now, before we go any further, I just got to tell you, come on, Stowe, okay? That's not good. Don't steal my book. All my notes are in my book. Does anyone got a, a book that addresses a lot of notes in it? Yeah. Representatives. Oh, is that my secret? Yes, thank you very much. Alrighty. Article seven, transact any other business thought proper, one man. Any questions of the school board, anything? Seeing no discussions.
I'll ask the same question I've been asking, but the result?
Results of what?
Sorry? So, our superintendent attended the select board meeting, and we are going to charge for what we, our usage now instead of a flat rate. So, previously, we were being charged a flat rate for water and sewer at this hole. The meters were turned on, and now we'll be charged for our usage.
Can I also, the sewer do?
Yes.
Any further discussions? Any other business brought forth? Seeing none, we will close the school meeting, and prior to going back into the town meeting, we'll break for lunch, the ladies have been waiting for us all. Thank you.
Fundamentally, Hope Her has made a total of 71,562 visits in Fundamentally. Of total 65 residents of Sheldon received 38, 3208 visits. So, we really appreciate your support. Fundamentally, Hope Her has been an important part of healthcare in the county, and we appreciate the, the, the money that you're giving. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Okay, last but not least, we have recessed out of the school meeting, we're going back into our town meeting now, and the last thing on, the agenda is Article 10, to transact any other business thought proper, one man. Does anyone have any business, let's discuss.
Let's talk about the land on Street Hall over at the townhouse.
Come out on that, David.
I'm one of five on the committee. We blocked it, it's got pins put in, nothing had really been set. We'd like to have the category, security patch go through it, see what the value is worth, and then input to the selectmen, pretty much what the townspeople would like to do. Nothing's happening yet.
I think there, according to my knowledge, approximately 73 acres in this, this forest lane that we had acquired back in 1957, which I didn't know we had. No, we do, it hasn't cost us anything, but there's a small parcel of land in the middle of that, that rock ten. So, there's, there's a lot of optional things that could be done, but it has been surveyed, pinned, sprayed, and so on and so forth. It's a continuing process, and we should be able to wrap that up. There's five of us on the, on the committee. Yeah, there's five of us on the committee, and hopefully we come up and present something to the select board that they can give back to the, it's been long enough, but it's a process. But like David was saying, we want to get a forester up there and see what, if they have any forest products and so forth. We've had it since 1957, and it cost us a penny, yes. So, there'd be a lot of things coming from, from the committee on that, insurance recommendations, but we don't have the ultimate say on it.
What are you talking about? Can you hear her?
I'm really scared.
Yeah, probably if you can't hear me when I first start, that'd be time to say that, and not when I get all done. That's not a problem. Did, did Amy hear this, we can let you know what's going on, or? He can't hear either? Well, I spoke to Amy anyways. It's a working process of 73 acres, we're looking into it, we don't have the final say on it. It'll get back to the board, and they'll make the presentation. We'll have, we'll have our own recommendations on it. Any other business to transact? Michelle?
I have a question for the vice chairman, but if, if we do buy a new truck, I'd like to know what we're going to do with the old one.
Is Mr. Piazni here?
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The old truck is, is slated to be replaced. Now, what now, either we're going to either sell it to the highest bidder, or donate to another buyer. We requested a, requested a trade-in value from three manufacturers, and nobody has participated in the truck. Then they won't give us the price of the trade-in. It's just cool for the fire department to be concerned.
Miles or under?
Higher.
Sorry, just moderating. How many miles are on the fire truck?
Um, the mile, the miles, there's a small one, the truck is 40,000 miles, but it's about 200 car, it's the safest we can, that are concerned with that truck.
Thank you. Anything further? Any other business to transact at this point in time? We have a motion on the floor. Would you, is there a second? There is a second. All in favor? Thank you, thanks for coming. We'll see you next year.